Now you'd be in the Daily Press, wires. Boys Club guys, sheets, innocent rabbits.
Without a gun permit.
Yeah, you'd be arrested for several things. I'll be all our daily mess.
Glad you made it.
So if there's something bad, you need to be the top of the daily mess.
You what?
Of course, that's what she's called.
No worries. Just after this meeting, I'll show you. You'll like it.
They'll publish that in a heartbeat.
I'd like to call to make a PCosen School Board meeting to order, please. Sophie?
Chandler Holcomb is an 11th grade student at PCosen High School that has participated in many extracurricular activities such as drama, track, cross-country, lacrosse, and show choir. He boasts over 1,000 community service hours and is an active member of his local church, Northside Christian Church. Chandler is currently a member of the Spanish Honor Society, Math Honor Society, Spanish Club, Drama Club, and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He has aspirations of attending Johnson University in Knoxville, Tennessee to pursue a future in pastoral ministry.
We could all stand and face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Brittany French is an 11th grade student involved in drama club, Spanish club, National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Teens for Troops. She is a military child interested in majoring in engineering at the Air Force Academy. Brittany is involved in many after-school hobbies, including horseback riding, archery, and a variety of sports.
"If," by Rudyard Kipling. If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too. If you can wait and not be tired by waiting, or being lied about, don't deal in lies. Or being hated, don't give way to hating, and yet don't look too good nor talk too wise. If you can dream and not make dreams your master. If you can think and not make thoughts your aim. If you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same. If you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by knaves to make a trap for fools. Or watch the things you've gave your life to broken, and stoop and build them up with worn-out tools. If you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it in one turn of pitch and toss. If you can lose and start again at your beginnings, and never breathe the word about your loss. If you can force your heart and nerve and sinew, to serve your turn long after they're gone. And so hold on when there is nothing in you, except the will which says to them, "Hold on." If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings nor lose the common touch. If neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you. If all men count with you, but none too much. If you can fill the unforgiving minute with sixty seconds worth of distance run. Yours is the earth and everything that's in it. And, which is more, you'll be a man, my son.
Thanks to you both. Nice job. Next up is our student presentation. And students, if you could please stay with us a few minutes after you complete your presentation. We'd like to take a brief intermission so we can talk with you. Our presentations tonight, first up is Ms. Osborne's AP. Okay, I'm sorry. First up, we will have Ms. Winchester's Economics and Personal Finance students. Victoria Shuke, Caitlin Morgart, and Hannah Eldridge would like to share their experiences as part of a pilot program incorporating Google Apps in the classroom.
Good evening. My name is Irene Winchester. I teach at PCosen High School. The girls are going to do most of the speaking tonight, but I just wanted to kind of get us started. My class, one of my Econ and Personal Finance classes, was fortunate to be able to pilot a program with Google Apps in the classroom in conjunction with an H&R Block Budget Challenge that my students participated in, competing against 16,000 students across America. We were able to get access to the email through the work of Dr. Cataldo and the IT staff at the high school, and the students had access to email in order to effectively communicate with H&R Block during the challenge. We were able to complete the task, and the students really had a good time and found a lot of benefit outside of the H&R Block Challenge itself. So I'll let the girls get going.
So one of the benefits of this is you have a personal email. And a lot of us, I know a lot of my peers, so cell phones came out during like middle school, elementary school for us. And for your phones, you have to have a Google Gmail. So of course, being the creative, imaginary little kids that we were, we did Soccer Chick '64 and My Little Pony Lover, and it's just very unprofessional and it's kind of embarrassing. So with this, it's very simple. You have your first name, dot your last name, at PCosen.org, and you can now send it out to colleges and be proud of it instead of like, oh my gosh, what am I doing? So, there you go.
Okay, another thing with this is that you have easy communication with teachers, and there's like filters, so emails with PCosen are receivable or other reapproved addresses. And a cool thing about this is that while you're working on projects or anything you may be doing while using Google Apps and stuff, is you can, you know, access documents at home, and you can use Google Calendar, and there's other things that you can use at home. And for example, if you're using presentation, you can collaborate with other peers or other people, and you can chat with them on the side. So that's really cool, so that you can communicate with them on the app. So it's not, you know, like text message off phones or things like that. It makes it a lot easier. And, yeah.
All right. So for Economics and Personal Finance class, we had a calendar, and it was so helpful because it's organized very nicely. And your teacher sets this up. You have all your tests, your vocab, what you're going to do for the day. So if you end up, you know, missing a day, you're sick, you can just log on to your phone. You know, us, we always have our phones on. So we're sick, we log on, what did we miss? We have it, we're caught up, always up to date. For my calendars, you can do, if other teachers want to do it, you can have other classes. So you have everything that you need, all your seven periods, hopefully. And it's very helpful, and it helped me so much in the class, and I absolutely love this.
Agreed. Another thing that's really cool with the calendars is that if you have multiple classes, they can, you can show it all on one calendar. So if we were to use this for ed line perhaps, we can look at all the dates for other classes and see, like if tests fall on the same day, or when assignments are, and things like that. And it's really cool because it's color-coded, so it's easy to follow, and you know, like what means what. And it's just a lot more easier to use, and it's really cool.
To wrap things up with this fabulous program, you have your professional email address. Again, you know, you don't want the embarrassing reliving your elementary school days. And your access to Google Apps, you know, technology, it's just so helpful nowadays, and it's good to really know and understand all that. You also have easy communication with your teachers. Again, if you miss school, hey, you know, you don't have to go and try to find their Gmail and try to look for them. You can just, it's easy on your phone, click, communicate, hey, what did I miss? You know, help. You have filters, people that like organization a lot, and the color-coded things, and your calendars for your assignments. And it's just so helpful. And I definitely, again, I loved it. It really helped me in school. So, thank you.
Okay, now we will have Lauren Osborne's AP Language and Composition students. Juliana Delon and Sophie McDevitt would like to share what they learned through a project entitled People of PCosen.
Hi, I'm Sophie McDevitt.
And I'm Juliana Delon. This is our People of PCosen project. We went around PCosen interviewing people, asking for quotes and such, to like take a little scrapbook of the town in a way. And like, it was inspired by this.
Humans of New York was done by Branton Stanton. He originally traded bonds for the Chicago Board of Trade, but when he lost his job, he decided to move to New York and just catalog what type of people he found living among the streets, and just different people that he met. And it was supposed to show the diversity and the amazing people you can meet in your own area. So he made, he ended up making a book out of it, and it's a bestseller. And he also has a Facebook page that he posts to regularly. So you can see, he's still updating things, and they've come out with multiple variations of the book.
We'd like to thank the PCosen Education Foundation for giving us a grant so that we could have books, like for the Humans of New York books, like that one, and like all the stuff that's helping us fund the project. Oh, we had two guest speakers to help us out. We had Jessica Pasek, who's a journalist. She helped us formulate questions and helping us, she helped us like interact, like how to approach a stranger in an interview or such. And Brian Kim, he's a writer and college instructor. He helped us dissect the interviews and find the most important stuff that we would put into our presentation.
And for this, we used Bring Your Own Device. So we were allowed to bring our cell phones, notes we took on our cell phones, pictures we took, along with our own personal cameras. And it was extremely helpful because as teenagers, we tend to forget things. And it was nice not to have to worry, did I email this to my teacher? Did I save it to a thumb drive? Did I have it on a school computer somehow? Because we were allowed to bring in our own personal devices and just get it right off it in the middle of class.
At the end of our project, we were asked to sum up our experience with the project in six words, and like a six-word reflection. And these are some of the best ones that we had from our class.
And I have to say, something I'd learned from this project is, I think PCosen gets a rap of not being very diverse, but I think we found a lot of diversity in our small town with just the people that live here, the people that come in and out every day. And it was really amazing to see things you can learn just from people in your own community when you just get out there and look for them. So this is a preview of our project. We included a couple slides at the end. So you will just play it. I think it runs on its own.
I think so.
That's great. So this was our first year of doing the project, but Ms. Osborne hopes to continue this project with her classes in the future. And it's really great to live in a community where we can all feel like we can go out, just two or three teenagers, and ask people just questions about their lives, and nobody thinks like we're trying to pull anything over on anyone. And so thank you for watching, and we're glad we got the chance to present.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. Very well done, very interesting. Next is our recognitions, after which we will take a short intermission.
As Dr. Carter is heading to the podium, I'd ask at this time if Mrs. Bradshaw would please come forward. And we're honoring her this evening for being selected as a Newport News Reading Council Paraprofessional of the Year. She is a kindergarten paraprofessional at PCosen Primary School. In her kindergarten classroom, she meets with every child every day to work on literacy skills. She truly makes sure no child is left behind. She leads Words Their Way groups and has created a weekly schedule so that each group completes a variety of types of sorts and activities using the words. Without teacher direction, Mrs. Bradshaw created an entire bulletin board to visually help her students remember the spelling patterns and generalizations they have learned. Mrs. Bradshaw is unofficially known as the Sight Word Queen at PPS. She helps students in her kindergarten class that are having difficulty learning their sight words. In addition to all of her kindergarten duties, Mrs. Bradshaw provides interventions for her first grade students that are low in the area of sight words. She has created her own games and activities based on Fry's 1,000 Words. These games are engaging, fun, and the students are always excited to work with her. Since Mrs. Bradshaw is such a love for what she does in the area of helping students learn sight words, she helped co-plan and present a parent workshop at Family Literacy Night. This workshop shared ideas with parents on how they could work on sight words at home with their children. She had games, samples, handouts, and goodie bags for families to take home. Her workshop was so successful that she also presented it to the PCosen Primary School staff as a professional development session and got rave reviews. And as an aside, I have to say, I attended both of those, and she did an excellent job. Toni Bradshaw is truly dedicated to what she does and the success of all students at PCosen Primary School. She spends her free time at home preparing games and activities to keep her interventions fresh and fun. She does whatever it takes for her students to be successful, and is always problem-solving and brainstorming ways to improve her current practices. She is simply amazing at her job, and we are very fortunate to have her working with our students to help improve their reading. Please join me in congratulating Toni Bradshaw for being selected the Newport News Reading Council Paraprofessional of the Year.
At this time, we'll take a short intermission. Okay, we'll move into our presentations and reports. And first, we'll have our financial update from Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I have just three brief updates. Let me begin with the budget. City Council has approved the school board budget for 2015-16 without changes. And since there were no changers, changes, there's no additional action required of the board this time. However, let me remind the board that when staff prepares this budget document, our final, our federal funding has not been finalized. So this information from the feds comes to us generally in the April to June timeframe. And so what we will do is, at our first summer meeting, we will have a budget amendment for the board to, to, to address our changes in the federal funding. Now, these changes, we generally have a good idea of what our federal funding's going to be for the next year, but they're just slight changes, but can, can run to 10,000 to 20,000, or in some cases, it has been higher. But, but we'll have that budget amendment for you in, in the first summer meeting. Closeout for fiscal year 2015 has begun. This is also a time that we begin preliminary work on our audit for 2015. We've already had several planning meetings with the auditors, and work is expected to commence the first week of June. This work will continue off and on throughout the summer, and then will resume with full audit staff at the first week of September until they complete their work, which usually runs at the end of September. And lastly, as, as I mentioned in my April report, staff was preparing for open enrollment for benefits, for employee benefits. We kicked that off last week, and already we had over half of our employees who have registered and completed their selection of benefits. So very successful week. Just a reminder to staff that open enrollment runs through June 12th, and at that time, the window closes. But we'll be sending reminder emails as that date approaches. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions coming? You said, with the amendment, you said it could run 10,000 to 20,000. And I'm assuming that's short of what we think it's going to be. Is it ever more than we think it's going to be?
We have seen it more in, in previous years. However, in the past couple of years, we've seen it come up just slightly short. So we, we tend to be very, very conservative on our estimates. So we, I tend to be a little lower on the low side until we get that final number. So it really hasn't had an impact on us.
Okay.
But there will, I just wanted to point out that there would be a change to this budget, but it's related to the federal funding.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you being prudent in that and conservative in your estimates. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Thank you. Next up is our operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, School Board, Dr. Parrish. I made it without tripping this time. This evening's operation report will focus on food service. And later this evening, the board will have an opportunity to review a reading file that asks for consideration of price increases for the 15-16 school year. So tonight, I'm going to give you a little rundown of an understanding of where we are, how we got here, and what opportunities we have moving forward. So here you see a chart that basically shows you the number of reimbursable meals. Unfortunately, if we could get rid of the bottom of that, you would see that the largest, there you go. This is 1112, and there's 1213, and there's quite a precipitous drop here. And this is the number of meals consumed by our students. And a reimbursable meal is a meal that fits the entire meal pattern. You've got to have a milk, a juice, the entree, the whole thing. And what happened was, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, the first phase kicked in where the meal pattern changed. And that happened, whoops, sorry, back, I'm doing a green. Slide two. There you go. You can see that the, this is the, it's a 15 percent, well, that's the year that the, the issues went into effect, the first phase. And overall, the new regulation required that all schools participating in the National School Lunch Program and the National School Breakfast Program serve more fruits, more vegetables, whole grains, while limiting sodium and calorie intake. And you've all seen the Y-tubes and whatnot. And this is dramatic effect of, of that represented in the meals consumed. The previous year was 85 meals. So we have 180 school days. The average student ate 85 reimbursable meals. That doesn't mean they didn't have à la carte meals. It's a full reimbursable meal. And then in that next year, we went down to 62, and you can see, we're pretty much holding the same. Here is a trend analysis of our sales, and you can see that sales dropped precipitously along the same break. And I'll point out here that sales were 739,000 back one Back one screen, please. And dropped down to six hundred and twenty-nine. Now, the economy was lagging at that time, but that doesn't account for this precipitous drop in revenue. So, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 has Section 205 that requires us to modify our prices. And this is what you'll find in your packet, your reading packet, along with some further explanation. But the price increases, again, are part of a continuation of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. Additionally, if you look in the lower right-hand corner for lunch at the high school, I'm requesting the board to consider the addition of what's called second-tier pricing. Next slide. So what is second-tier pricing? It's part of our strategy for increasing sales. So what you have now is schools all across the country are looking for ways to increase lagging sales while still meeting all of the requirements of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act and all of the parameters of the meal components. So while second-tier pricing is relatively new, it's being done in other schools, and in fact, Williamsburg James City County did it this year with some very good success. And I was very pleased to share that with both you and to learn of it from their food service director. Now, please note, when you do second-tier pricing, students who are free or reduced eat free or reduced. There's no, no harm, no foul. If you're free, you're free. If you're reduced, you're reduced. There's no increase in your reduced payment. You pay where you're slotted. This gives us a great opportunity to, let's say, instead of serving Chicken McNuggets that we all remember the commercial many years ago, now you could serve something like a whole muscle meat that you would get in a chicken fillet-style restaurant. And there's, students are going to enjoy that product much better than the prototypical product that you can serve at the much lower price. So with the price differential, students are going to become more enticed to avail themselves of foods that they're much more accustomed to getting and that will fit with their lifestyle and their desires. And that's the strategy, in a nutshell. You can see what we might offer, some carved meats, build-your-own taco bar and salad bar. And these are the kinds of things that students, A, want, and B, are going to be getting when they move to college anyway. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, sir. Questions? Comments there?
I do have a comment. I will say, as a student who gets lunch every day, it's really nice to see a couple more options, because you have to realize, for those of us that buy lunch every day, we buy lunch from the same place every day. And more options would be nice, and I especially like the salad bar, because we do like to eat healthy, believe it or not. And it is nice to see more options for fruits and vegetables. Thank you.
Steve? Is the reimbursable rate going up? Is that what your slide showed?
The reimbursable meal rate?
Yes.
It goes up every year.
Okay.
But the slide that you're inquiring about?
Yeah, we had an angle. We could, we could barely see that, so I probably was misreading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you looking at the?
It's, it's okay. You answered my question.
Okay.
It's perfect.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. All right, and instructional update with Dr. Colley.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. I'm going to start with that wonderful presentation tonight. Hadn't planned on mentioning that, but they did such a nice job. I thought it might be nice to follow up just a little bit, because I was at the high school today, and the, one of the first things I saw was their red, yellow, and green lights for when it's okay to use BYOD, when it might need to be face-down on your desk, and, and when it can't be used at all. So I just thought, wow, what a great testament to the fact that they're starting to be able to manage and use their own devices in school. And I really just want to speak a minute to Ms. Winchester's and Ms. Osborne's students' presentation, because I thought they showed two really interesting but different uses of BYOD. One, really talking about how students are beginning to be able to use their devices for productivity through the Google apps that they're using and accessing the calendar and their assignments and so forth. And then also, being able to bring their phones out into the field and then back into the classroom to use that. So I appreciate all of their work and all of our teachers' and administrators' work on getting that going in, in the schools. I think it's been successful so far, and we will keep you posted on more with BYOD. This evening, the rest of my instructional update is going to focus on our finishing the school year strong and looking at student achievement. That's measured many ways, and we saw some ways it's measured tonight. I saw lots of quizzes and assignments up there and this wonderful hands-on project. It's also measured through some of our standardized testing, and you know that we're full force in that season, so I thought I would just update you on where we are. Most recent, our youngest kids most recently participated in the phonological awareness literacy screening, better known as PALS, if your students have been talking about PALS. And that's to ensure that they have the needed reading skills and letter identification skills to be successful. Our students in grades three through twelve are currently taking their SOL tests, and that measures their content mastery. You may have read in today's paper that Pearson, our testing company, had a few little connectivity issues last week, but I'm happy to report that those issues really resulted in minimal disruption for PCOS and students. New this year, as I've also mentioned, is statewide SOL reform, and our grade-three Science and History Social Studies SOL, our grade-five Writing SOL, and our middle-school US I and US II SOL tests have been eliminated. This year, our teachers in those subject areas have worked to develop assessments that will measure that learning in a different way, rather than fill-in-the-blank or bubble-sheet SOL tests. Additionally, students in grades three through eight may now also take expedited retakes of those SOL tests. And we're just now working through that for the first time, but our early results are showing us that parents are responding very positively and responsively, really quickly, to this opportunity. So we look forward to that. Finally, our secondary students are taking, have just taken their advanced placement exams, and they will be taking their career and technical education credentialing exams. And those exams then may lead to college credit for our students or industry certifications. So lots going on, lots to be proud of, and I know you'll join me in recognizing both our students and our teachers for a job well done, getting ready to finish up the school year, being flexible around all these testing schedules and, and adjusting as we go. I appreciate their work. I know you do. And that concludes my update for this evening as well.
Thank you. Any questions, comments there? All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cass, would you like to take us through the consent agenda, please?
Sure. The consent agenda tonight, items A through E, including approval of minutes of April regular meeting and work session, B, approval of financial reports, C, approval of personnel action, D, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with the attached request, and E, authorization for PHS to apply for membership with Virginia High School League for school year 2015-2016, and there are reading files enclosed.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
And up next, other matters for consideration. First up is consideration of approval of proposed increase to meal prices for school year 2015-2016.
Yeah, I would, I don't need, I think, do much clarification here, because I think Mr. Pappas did a nice presentation about this, and you do have the reading file. I have to say, Sophie, I'm glad to hear you're excited about some of those changes that are coming. So hopefully, we'll see even more meals being eaten in the high schools. So with that said, I just recommend approval of the proposed increase to the meal prices for next school year.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments there? Mr. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
And item B, consideration of authorization for superintendent to sign the Virginia Municipal League Member Agreement, and there was a reading file enclosed there. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we work with VML. They provide our insurance, as well as some other benefits that we get by working with them. So this is asking for your approval to authorize me to sign as a member of, for the school division, as a member of VML, so that we can, because we need to work with them for insurance and other benefits.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there? All right, Mr. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. And item C, consideration of approval of PCPS pay plan with adjusted 2.5% increase, and there was a reading file enclosed there as well. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I'm certainly happy that we're able to bring this one to you, since we are bringing to you the pay increase that was included in the budget that you sent forward to City Council and that through their funding ultimately can happen. So you have within your reading file what the adjusted pay scale will be for our teachers, and that two-and-a-half percent was adjusted across all components of their plan, and as well for the plan that we use for our staff that are actually not teachers, that we call that our Unified Pay Plan. And we are adjusting, or proposing adjusting, the minimum and maximum amount on those, so that as we go out to recruit people, we can take that two-and-a-half percent increase as part of that pay plan that we show them. So with that said, I'd just ask that you approve the pay plan as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Parrish, supplements. How are, is that a formula to determine what the supplements are?
Meaning for the masters?
For the masters', the hours', certificates', doctorate?
Yeah, those are, those are the actual amounts that teachers would receive, and they provide us documentation that they have a master's degree, a doctorate degree, or they've gotten so many hours past the master's degree. You will see in some school divisions, they do a master's pay lane. We don't do that. We just give them that supplement, so every year, that's on top of what their base pay is.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. And last item, consideration of approval of the math textbook adoptions for grades K through eight and selected high school courses, and there was a reading file there as well.
Yes, I'm happy also to bring this forward to you, because for the vast majority of our textbooks, we've had the textbooks we have in place right now for at least ten years. And as you know, in the last six-year funding's been very tight, so it's been challenging to replace textbooks. We are able to do that this year. It's important that we do that, because as you know, we got new math SOLs during the course of the last few years, and with that came new SOL tests for us. So these textbooks that were selected by our teachers and administrators are aligned with the Virginia Standards of Learning and will be very helpful as we continue to teach our children. Know that as part of our process, we do put them out for public review, so the public is able to review these textbooks before we bring them forward to you for adoption. But they've all gone through the, the process with us, and we're bringing forward to you the textbooks we'd like you to approve as adoptions for our schools.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Are the books on review in the library? Is that right? Or?
I know we had them available upstairs in the school board office for, to see them. I'm not sure, they're in the library as well. Well, they're still upstairs, if people want to see them.
Okay, okay. We good? All right, Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir, there are none.
All right. Dr. Parrish, would you kick off our communications, please?
Yes, I just, in reference to the pay scales that you just approved, I want to thank both you and City Council members for the support that you provided through the budget. Certainly, the additional funding that you requested from City Council is what helped us to do two-and-a-half percent this year, which is the single biggest raise our employees have received in the last six years. And I, I know they're appreciative of it. As I've said, and you said, we hope in the future be able to do more, but it's certainly nice to be able to, to do this. And what I hadn't realized until it occurred is that City Council passed their budget the week of Teacher Appreciation Week. So we found out about our raises that week, which was kind of nice. I want to wish all of our students the best on SOL testing. I know we're getting to the end of the year, so I please ask that you stay focused. It is not the end of the year yet, especially you seniors out there who are looking to graduate in June 13th. And also, a thank you to teachers and staff. I know I've been attending a lot of end-of-year programs and performances by students, and there are more to come, and it's always just wonderful to see, see those performances and the hard work that our students and our staff do in, in making those things happen. So believe it or not, we will not meet again until after June 13th graduation, so I do wish our students and families a very happy graduation.
Thank you, ma'am. Sophie?
The PCOS and Primary hosted its second annual Spring Fling Carnival Friday evening. The carnival was a huge success, with over four hundred children and their families attending. With all the games, activities, and food, everyone had a great time, and since the weather was so great, the carnival was outside. Last night, the second graders performed for their families a musical presentation, a salute to Broadway. They sang famous Broadway hits to a packed house. The elementary school had a lot of exciting activities. The third graders went on a field trip to the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame and Museum, where the students engaged in fun games as a review for the SOL tests. The fourth graders went to Richmond to tour the Capitol and were able to sit in the House of Delegate seats and go through the scenario of presenting a bill, speaking to support it or not, and then actually voting on it to see if it would pass. PCOS and's very own delegate, Halsel, met all four buses and was able to tour the Capitol with the classes, arranged for a visit to the chamber, and provide everyone with a delicious box lunch. Fifth graders in the Ecology Club were able to go kayaking in the Chesapeake Bay, which has become a favorite activity. For the middle school, the SOL testing started today. The teachers are encouraging students to stay after for SOL prep and review sessions. The Spring Chorus Concert is this Thursday, May 21st, at 7:00 p.m. Eighth-grade students are invited to stay after school June 1st for a physical science game show review. Drama students will put on a production June 4th at 7:00 p.m., and the eighth-grade celebration will take place on June 5th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. The high school has successfully completed AP testing and are currently complete, competing, completing, SOL testing. The CTE, Industry Certification Testing, and final exams will follow the SOLs. After-school tutoring continues for those areas that have not had SOL tests yet. We had a very successful prom this year at the Mariners Museum and an after-prom event at PHS. We have also just completed our National Honor Society induction. The Senior Scholarship and Awards Night will be Wednesday, June 3rd, at 6:30, and graduation will be Saturday, June 13th, at Liberty Baptist Church. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Congratulations to all the students who were inducted into the National Honor Society last night. Thank you very much for the staff that made a very successful and enjoyable ceremony, and also like to express appreciation for all those that supported the prom and the after-prom party. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Melton?
As we enter, enter the school year, get near to that, it's nice to have a quiet year, and that doesn't happen without a lot of effort on a lot of folks' part, including our bus drivers, our custodians, assistants in the main offices, the city employees in the police department that help maintain our buildings and grounds and our safety, all of our teachers who teach so hard and do so well with preparing our students for, for the testing as the year goes. To our building administrators, you know, the folks in the front office, the principals and the assistant principals, the multiple areas of leadership in the school board office, and even including our city leaders who help fund all this. Now, this doesn't happen without a lot of effort. It's been a very quiet year, but I'm grateful for quiet years as a school board member up here, so thank you all for all your hard work.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Cass?
I also would like to, to thank everybody who was involved with after-prom. I've received so many comments about how great it was and how well-received and, and what, what what, what a great thing it is that we do this for our, our folks in, in the Pecosin community. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Parrish and Mr. Bowen and the rest of the staff, and a great budget process. I do realize how hard it is to put us in a position that we can make the right decisions, and we appreciate what you, you've done and how hard you work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank city council again for approving the budget and helping us with that 2.5 percent pay increase, and we would love to do more, and I hope to be on the board when we can. That would be nice to be able to spend a little bit of money on some, some things like that. Prom, I'd like to echo the sentiments there. Heard it was a huge success. And after-prom equally as well, and, and just had a lot of good, positive feedback as well. Mr. Pappas, thank you, sir, and your staff for being very creative in how you're going to feed our kids and, and make it more palatable, I guess, and the federal government's put you between a rocky, hard place, and it, I, I hope you beat them at their game, sir. I hope it just is a huge, huge success, and we see those numbers start to rise up again. But, but thank you for all that you, all that you do in that area. And Ms. Bradshaw, thank you again for all of your work. Sounds like you're a very special person, and they're very grateful to have you, and, you know, listening to what Dr. Parrish said, it just, I think that's just the tip of the iceberg to what you do for, for the kids, and I know that you are greatly appreciated both from this perspective up here and from in the classroom, as well as the parents. So thank you for all of your work. And with that, do we have any material for board review?
We do not.
Then we will adjourn to our work session. Thank you very much.